Hello, everyone. This is the Village of Round Lake Beach Council Meeting for December 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valades?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Here.
Mayor Nichols?
Here. For record show, a quorum is present, and can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? I delete to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. First item for the approval of the agenda, can I have approval of agenda for tonight's session?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Valades. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I just have that. Approval of the meeting minutes for November 15th, 2021, I also need a motion and a second.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have that as well. Approval of expenditures, we have expenditures of $2,714,003.64. Susan, you want to give us a little information?
Sure. Yes, we had $2,714,003.64 due to the fact... Due to the fact that we had bond payments this month for January 1st bonds, which are detailed there on the sheet. We also detailed any items over $100,000 for you, so we had some construction payments. Typically, we also have our Blue Cross, Blue Shield, medical insurance invoice, and then we have ACH and wire expenditures that are also noted separately as well.
All right. We did go over all of this in the Committee of the Whole. Everyone's taken a look at it. Are there any questions at all for Susan?
Yeah.
Hearing none, then. Can I have a motion for the approval of expenditures for $2,714,003.64? So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Davis. All in favor? I'm sorry, roll call vote. And I'm sorry, they had it incorrect again. Your name's wrong. Do you want that changed? Okay. We'll get it next week.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, I just have that as all when motion carries. Moving on to Committee of the Whole reports. Do any of the trustees have any reports at all? All right, hearing none, we'll go on to the mayor's report. We do have a few, a couple here. The holiday decorating contest winners. I will step down because we do have at least one of the families present. The Loue residence at 2454 Orchard Lane, I'll take this off for a minute, at 2454 Orchard Lane, won first prize this year. I will leave this here. We'll get back to them. The Glinsky residence at 348 Stanton Court, they are here tonight and like to step down and present this. Can someone grab a photo up for the clerk?
She got it?
There were about 12 of us, the team staff and trustees.
Super fun, okay.
If you guys are all right, we'll take these off just a minute if you want. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And your gift card there is on the back.
Thank you guys so much.
We love it.
Every year.
They should have got a little bit out of the spirit, so he does really need his day.
Oh, great.
He didn't even know there was a contest.
Oh, perfect. The third place is going to the rise goes residence at 2356 Periwinkle Way, and I'll make sure we get this out to them as well. And the honorable mention this year goes to the Alvarez residence at 607 Heather Terrace. Those photos are online on the website. They are on, they will be on our Facebook page as well, so everyone can see what they have. I greatly appreciate you guys. Yes? I shall. You know what, I will...
Or next year.
Oh, well, you know what, I'll have one made. That's fine, because if you guys' namers together now, absolutely. I'll have one printed up, and then if we can, maybe I'll drop it, I'll have it dropped off with the rest of these, okay? Thank you, guys. We'll give you a call. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Mark, would you put that on the list and have it printed up? I'll sign it. All right. Moving on also then now to the swearing in of our new Community Development and Economic Development Director, Mark Janik. If you want to step up to the front here, she'll read off your swearing in.
All right, let me raise your right hand. I am Mark Janik.
I'm Mark Janik.
Having been appointed to the position... ...of Community Development and Economic Development. Director of the Village of Round Lake Beach. Do solemnly swear... ...or affirm that I will support... ...the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the United of, sorry, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge... ...the duties of the office... ...of Community Development and Economic... ...Development Director... ...to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Mark, if you want to come on up and sign? Glad to have you here. Here you go. Mark, one more. Right here, though.
It's okay.
We'll get that one corrected.
No, no worries.
Thank you. All right, going on item C, our clerk's report. Clerk, do we have anything tonight?
No, we don't.
All right. Moving on to business item A, then. An ordinance establishing regular meeting dates for 2022 for the Village Board and Village Committee Boards and Commissions. Mark, do you have anything to add on this? I know it's just an update to our records.
It is, and it just reflects the holidays that are set for the '22, '23 year. And I know Kate did look at changing some dates around, but after staff review of those dates for some of the commissions, we declined to make those changes.
All right. So then if I could, a motion and a second for the regular meeting dates for 2022 being posted. So moved by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. And roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
I just have that. It'll move on. Business item B, ordinance granting special use permit for a beauty salon and granting variations for the property at 527 West Rollins Road. Kate, if you give us a little info?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. So this is a petition for a special use permit. This is a structure that was previously a single-family dwelling that lost its legal non-conforming status. The property owner intends to use it as a hair salon, has submitted the concept plan document that has gone through staff review, and we are asking for the board to vote on approving that special use permit.
All righty. If I could, then, I know we all took a look at the requested changes that they're doing, updates. Can I have a motion and a second past this? So moved by trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by trustee Valades, and a roll call vote.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
I just have that. Motion carries. Business item C, an ordinance granting special use permit for a dispensary at the property of 993 East Rollins Road.
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. This petition was also heard at the December 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The petitioner also came to the Committee of the Whole meeting last week to give the trustees an opportunity for clarifying questions, and this petition was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the ask is for a special use permit as per our ordinance for a cannabis dispensary business use on an existing structure at 993 East Rollins Road with modifications as listed.
All right. And I know we all did get time to discuss this and look over and listen to their proposal on the work that they're going to be doing at that site. Does anyone have any questions?
People that are going to be working there, what kind of training are they going to have?
It's all regulated through the state.
Have they got classes or something?
Yeah, everything, everything with, state regulates this higher than anything.
Okay.
So as far as how they run it, it's not anything to do with us on our end.
That's all defended on the state, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and the requirements that they have are extremely difficult.
And I'd be, I would offer additionally that they provided a 60-page operating plan that I believe you could find in that planning and zoning packet that I shared, and both myself and the Ansel Glink attorney who specializes in this type of use reviewed that, and it does appear to substantially comply with the state requirements. You're welcome.
Perfect. If not, then can we have a motion and a second also on the ordinance granting the special use permit for 993 East Rollins?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk. Second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland? Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
All right, yes, it has it. We will move on to item D, a resolution approving the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois for health insurance services for the Village of Round Lake Beach. Mark?
Yes, in short, our health insurance for all our employees is only going to go up, and we're staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is very important to the morale of the employees and as well as the Blue Cross Blue Shield Delta Plan. The Delta Insurance decreased from year to year by just less than 3%, 2.97, and we only had a 3.72 increase to our overall cost for Blue Cross Blue Shield. So that was a very good year for the village, especially with the cost of health insurance nationwide. So we're very happy with that, but we're also very encouraged to be able to roll out options this year with Blue Cross Blue Shield in our provider, to have not just the standard PPO, single family, single plus one options, but also to have a Blue Cross Blue Shield option for an HMO and under the same, you know, individuals, plus one family. So we've got that, as well as a high deductible health savings plan for the first year for employees to choose. So it's very clear that everyone will self-enroll to the same PPO in the past unless they come to one of the open enrollment sessions where there'll be assistance from staff as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield, our broker agents, to inform them of their options with an HMO or a high deductible plan. So we'll have an open enrollment, but if no one chooses to make any changes, they will just be automatically self-enrolled again in the standard PPO plan that they had this past year. So it should be very easy for the employees to choose, but we want to educate them of their options to have these other greater options in the future.
All righty. So the resolution approving the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois for health insurance services for the Village of Round Lake Beach. Can I have a motion and a second? All right, so moved, motion by trustee Valades, second by trustee Cleveland, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, I just have that. Motion carries. And item E, a resolution approving the proposal for property casual casualty and work compensation, workers' compensation insurance for the Village of Round Lake Beach. Mr. Rooney, again.
Again, this is our, our agent was able to change one thing on our standard plan that we've had in the past, moving from Chubb to HHC is a new underwriter for our insurance on the property casualty. The worker's comp is basically staying the same. There's an increase based on our, on the Illinois, but as well as our own use mod on how many times we've had injuries or claims on the, on the program. But overall, I know that Susan sat in with me on this, and we recommended that change because we could save some money, and we made one change on, on one of the deductibles in the plan, but it is essentially the same as the last two years with the exception of the underwriter for, with HHC instead of Chubb. And we do save $25,000 on the premium for that change.
Great. Thank you very much. So if we can, then, a motion and a second on the resolution approving the proposal for property casual and workers' compensation insurance for the Village of Round Lake Beach. Can I have a motion? So moved by trustee Stout.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk, and a roll call vote again, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. And item F, an ordinance providing for the levy of taxes for the Village of Round Lake Beach for Lake County, Illinois, for the tax levy year 2020, actually, yes, for the year 2020 to be collected in the year beginning January 1st, 2022? 2021? No problem. Tax year, tax year, tax year levy 2021 to be collected in the year beginning January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st of 2022 in the amount of $3,164,000, I'm sorry, yeah, $164,997. Susan?
Yes, we have in front of, in front of you, I'm hoping. It's not showing up on the screen. It didn't go forward. You see? I have the, I'm sorry, we're trying, I'm trying to get this, it's not moving forward, the slides on the screen and the TV. You don't know why? We're still connected, so.
We did go over it, so if you just want to kind of give the rundown.
Yeah, we did. Oh, go ahead. Okay.
Essentially, we, we're going to just review for the public's purposes what we did a month ago with the council, the PowerPoint slide showing the changes of the tax levy and how small amount that really is to run the general corporate fund of the village government. We're very lucky, as everybody in this room knows, to have a very strong sales tax base. Therefore, most of the tax levy increases going to fund the two pensions, the IMRF and the police pension, and only a small dollar amounts going to the general corporate to run all the operations of the day-to-day activities at the village. But that's only possible because of the strong sales tax numbers that we have. And we had the PowerPoint slide that we were going to show you. Is it, is it functioning again?
It's not moving forward. I'm not sure why.
Well, you can, you can go through your screen and just, really, we wanted to get that point across of the, of the increase to, on somebody's tax bill with that pie chart, which we're going to show on the webpage as well as our...
Sure.
...community Facebook page for the public at home.
We can show it all on the website. If you just want to give a brief synopsis of the...
Sure, I will do that.
Of what our portions are.
So what we're, what we're, what we'll show on the website is that for most, well, first of all, for someone with $150,000 home, they're going to see under the scenario that the board selected, a $4, or excuse me, a total of $7 increase annually on their property tax bill under this proposal. And on a $250,000 home, it would be $12, and that's per year. That's not monthly. What we also, what we'll also show is that based on last year's property tax rate comparison, the Village of Round Lake Beach is right in the center of the seven communities surrounding round and near the Round Lake Beach. So Round Lake Heights, Village of Lindenhurst, and the Village of Graves Lake all have a slightly lower tax rate, and the Village of Lake Villa, Round Lake, and Round Lake Park all have a slightly higher tax rate than the Village of Round Lake Beach. So we're right in the center of the seven. For people who are in the tax code area 7006, which basically includes the Round Lake Area School District, the village represents, without the, the tax levy, the, or excuse me, without the pensions, the village portion represents 3% of their total property tax bill. So for 3% of your total tax bill, you're, and that's really due a lot to the strength of the sales tax that's received by the community, you're, you're only paying, you're getting all the services that the village provides, and if you add in police pension, which is 4% of the tax bill, for seven, a total of 7%, you're getting all those tax services and paying for the pensions. And I apologize, not just the police pension, but the IMRF as well. If you're in the taxing code, that includes the Graves Lake School Districts, again, the village, or actually, the village is about 6% of the total property tax bill. And actually, 70% of your tax bill goes to the Graves Lake Schools. And finally, also, if you're under the tax code area that includes Grant High School, Lake Villa, and Lake Villa Township, you're, again, pay 7% of your property tax bill to the village, which includes the pension fund monies. So just important facts for you to know that, and, and the total dollar amount that the village, new dollars that the village will receive, non-pension portion is about $38,000, excuse me, $28,000, and that will go to fund inflationary costs, predominantly inflationary costs in the general fund. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. For the ordinance providing the levy of taxes for the, for 2020 to be collected in the year of 2022, January through December 31st, in the amount of $3,164,997, can I get a motion, please? So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Stout, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Yes? Yeah, 2021 through, paying for the 2021 with the January through December 31st, 2022 year. And we do do everything we can to keep, keep these numbers as low as possible, and all of our services, from public works to police, do come out of this percentage, and I believe where you said 3 to, 3 to 4% total without the pensions?
3%, correct.
3%. And then the rest of your, the rest of your tax bill is going to your school boards, your, your park districts, your library district, et cetera. They're getting the larger majority of it to take care of things. So we do fairly well in, in the village to, to make sure we keep our numbers as low as possible and offer the same services above or beyond any of our surrounding communities. Business item G, an ordinance authorizing the abatement of property taxes heretofore levied for the year 2021 to pay the principal and interest on the Series 2009, 2010, 2013, and 2016 general obligation bonds in the amount of $1,872,231.25. Susan, if you could give us a background on that?
Did I turn it off?
You're good.
There we go. So each year, the village determines whether they have the capability to pay the bond debt through the general fund or MFT fund resources, and then therefore abate the property tax levy to the county, because all those bond ordinances that have been filed with the county, the county has to levy those taxes unless we tell them to abate those levies. So that, this is what this is doing. This is telling the county, abate the levy, therefore, this will not be on people's property tax bill. This is being, all the debt payments for 2022, 23 are being paid through the general fund resources or the MFT resources for the, for the 2010 bonds.
All right, thank you, then. So the ordinance authorizing the abatement of the property taxes levied for 2021 to pay the principal and interest on the Series 2009, 10, 13, and 16 general obligation bond in the amount of $1,872,231.25. Can I have a motion and a second, please? So moved by trustee Valades.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Before we move on to item H, we do have the Alvarez family who has arrived, and I just want to make sure that we, we grab a picture with them and honor them with the honorable mention for the 2021 holiday decorations. So if you wouldn't mind, can I have you come up to the front of the podium there?
Like up here?
Over here.
And I'm going to get out of your way, so it won't be in the back.
Don't bomb them, right?
Yeah, exactly.
There you go. How's that all? It would go there. And you folks, are you aligned with a quick, quick picture without the mask?
Yeah, absolutely.
That way everyone can see us. Yeah? All right, so this is your, your certificate, and your, your certificate is on the back.
Oh, thank you.
of the post.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you guys very much, you might want to hold on to the little
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Beautiful job decorating.
Thank you for the holiday spirit.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you for the interruption there in the item H. We'll move on, resolution approving the Illinois Department of Transportation Obligation Retirement Resolution. Susan, we have another one for you.
Yes, this is, and the village, or, yeah, the village has bonds that are Build America Bonds that are funded by the Motor Fuel Tax Fund, and in order to take the monies out of the Motor Fuel Tax Fund, we're required to file a retirement resolution with IDOT so that they can authorize the expenditure of those funds for the debt service payments that's attached for you. That's in the amount of $310,153.
All right. All right, then, if we could, the resolution, I know we discussed this in the committee of hold as well, a resolution approving the Illinois Department of Transportation Obligation Retirement Resolution. Can I have a motion and a second, please? So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Davis. And a roll call vote.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that. On to item I, an ordinance approving an amendment to the facility usage agreement for the Village around, for the Round Lake Beach Cultural and Civic Center with Heritage Church. Mark, you want to give the update on the rental?
Yes, that, this is just a simple addendum to the agreement, not an entire rework, which will be next summer. This is just for the two offices that they're gonna occupy and pay rent and an additional $300 per month.
Okay.
So it's just a very simple to the addition of their usage in the basement offices.
All right, this is just more or less an amendment to the current lease arrangement agreement we have with them. So if I can, a motion and a second for the, $300 additional for the office space.
Yeah, the addendum. They voted on the addendum.
So moved by trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
All right, I'm moving on, the ayes have that as well. Item J, an ordinance amending section 10-5-9-1 of the Round Lake Beach Village Code relative to the charges for water and sewer services. Director Hiltz?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. This, this was discussed at the committee meeting. It was a few things to make the adjustment in the code was reestablish the 3% increase to the water rate that has typically been in 2013, but it was not in the last three, three years, but to reestablish the 3% increase, also to make adjustments to the customer fees, they have not been adjusted since 2012 or '10, and then also establish a small per gallon fee to the sewer rate. These increases that are stated are projected to target future repairs specifically to any bond repayment or operating costs for the water and sewer capital.
Correct. So this is more or less, Scott, just, just a recap for people who might not understand it, that any, any repairs and work like that, that is above and beyond, so we aren't coming back to them later with a high rate, this is to cover the
Correct.
The overall costs of repairs.
Yes, as we project our future capital program, we either budget in the future or go out for bonds and then, and then pay down that bonds from, from the increases.
All right, thank you. So if we can, a motion and a second for the ordinance approving the amendment to the facility usage agreement for Round Lake Beach Cultural, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, reading the wrong one. Amending the, the section 10-5-9-1 of the Round Lake Beach Village Code relative to the charges for water and sewer. So moved by trustee Stout.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Business item K, a resolution authorizing the application for community block grant funds for the program year 2022. Scott, this is a great one, I'm excited to hear about, can you give me some information?
Yes, this, this is a community block grant application, the village is typically applied for, the application has been submitted, we did discuss this at the committee of the whole meeting, this is just to authorize the, the mayor to sign the application stating that the village will apply to all the application rules through the county. So we do target our sidewalk program for this application, and we've typically received $80,200,000 with these programs.
And this is all money that we're being able to use as grant money rather than coming out of our pockets to fulfill the
That's correct.
The different work that we want to get accomplished. So it's, it's a great use, I appreciate you guys following up with the grants. Can I have a motion then for the resolution authorizing the application for community block grant funds for program year 2022?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Valdez. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
The ayes have that, motion carries. Business item L, a resolution committing local funds for the rebuild downtown grant. Director Hiltz?
Yes, so this is a new grant opportunity that our consultants did research for us. Some of the comprehensive plan also includes, you know, always the cultural centers or the civic center, and this would be targeted to make improvements to the outdoor performance area. We've had some concept plans and cost estimates, this is a very similar project that was funded in another community, they were granted over a million dollars, so we will be submitting our application in January 10th. So with most grants, they want you to dedicate some local funding, so we are, part of our application that we would match 20% of the total project and hopefully be able to target anywhere from 800 to a million dollars from this grant.
Be a great addition, again, using some local grant fund money rather than doing it all ourselves, so that'll be an awesome addition. So can I have a, a motion and a second for a resolution committing local funds for rebuild downtown grant?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Valdez. All right, and can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee
The ayes have that as well, motion carries. We're on to item M, a resolution approving amendment to support maintenance agreement with Impact Networking LLC. Scott, I believe you've been dealing with this as well.
Yes, so again, this is similar to heritage contract, it's, it's an addendum to the existing contract. Impact, we have a three-year contract in the, and we're in the middle, actually, at the end of the three-year contract that does not give us dedicated onsite support like the previous two contracts, and it has been an interruption of day-to-day operations both in PD and all throughout the village. So one of the areas that we did target is to add that onsite staff or IT tech at least one day a week, this was the addendum, it's an extra $5,000 a month, however, with the increased demand on technology changing, it's definitely a, it would add in productivity without, within the departments.
Great. So if I could, then a, a motion and a second for the resolution approving the amendment to support the maintain, new maintenance agreement with Impact Networking, and I should say the amendment to the agreement, not a new one. A motion and a second, please? So moved by trustee Stout.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well, motion carries. Item N, a resolution approving an agreement with Axon Enterprises Evidence.com, this is for the body and police, police body cameras and car cameras chief, I'm guessing?
Yes, this is a, this is the, the program that will, that will allow us to upload this up to the, to the cloud so that the state attorney's office and other people can actually access this, so it improves our efficiency and abilities that we do not have currently to copy video and, and move it forward, video evidence, but it would be for the body cam footage, squad footage, any action, digital footage that we would upload, as opposed to burning individual DVDs, which is kind of antiquated, so.
Great, all right. If I could, then a motion and a second for the resolution approving the agreement with Axon Enterprises and Evidence.com. So moved by trustee Davis, second by trustee Cleveland. All in, I'm sorry, a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
I was trying to save your vo, voice there, I think, huh?
Yep.
All right. Business item O, a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain information technology equipment from CDWG not to exceed $20,000. Director Hiltz?
Yes, so this is just a authorizing staff to spend up to $20,000 past the administrative limit. All these items were budgeted in our current fiscal year, CDWG is a local vendor and typically a very competitive pricing to upgrade all our technology equipment, so.
Great. And again, this was budgeted, it's just an authorization allowing the, the check to be cut, more or less, correct?
Correct. Administratively, staff can only expend their $10,000
Without.
Without authorization from the board.
If I could have a motion and a second for the authorization to purchase the certain information technology equipment from CDWG, which is a government entity, not to exceed the $20,000. Motion?
So moved.
Trustee Cleveland, motion?
Second.
Second by trustee Stout. And a roll call vote?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
The ayes have that, motion carries. Item P, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain property, that property located 1128 and 1130 North Cedar Lake Road for the cost of $28,000. Director Hiltz, yes?
Yes, this property was near Memorial Park, and it's a vacant lot, it's next to, it is adjacent to our current parking lot that we just repaved. It does give us access to expand the parking lot and possibly an access point to be more visible for the public off of the Cedar Lake Corridor to attract more patrons to the local businesses, neighborhood.
Thank you very much. If we could then, a motion and a second, resolution authorizing acquisition of the property 1128 and 1130 North Cedar Lake Road for the $28,000. We were able to negotiate with the owner.
That is correct.
So the, the property value, I think we're, we're doing very well at to, to add extra parking possibly for businesses there in that area. So if we could, I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. Well, we are at the end of our business items, we are now at the point where we're open to public participation. I believe we are out of public participation, as they have all left at this point. So if we could, we have no public participation tonight, we have no executive session. Yes, Scott, go ahead.
Not to prolong your meeting, but what, I, I should have chimed in on the cannabis dispensary application at 993 Rollins Road. The, the, so that it's clear in the record, the cannabis that the board voted on today was the dispensary application under the zoning ordinance, the public hearing had occurred before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission found that the applicant met the criteria for a special use, as, as your village planner, Kate Portillo, said, the, the entire packet of their application was reviewed by her and by my office, by one of my partners who has done a lot of work in this area, and it felt, it was found to be in compliance with the state requirements, and, and the state has the final say as to the compliance there. This was not a vote on whether to allow cannabis in the village through dispensary, this was on the individual application.
All right, thank you for the clarification. We do not have any executive session tonight for probable pending litigation or land acquisition, sale of land, executive session minutes or personnel, and since we have no executive session items, can I call for an adjournment, motion? So moved by trustee Davis. Second by trustee Valdez, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are done, thank you very much.